On Monday, July 20th, 2020. We have a few members of the public here tonight. I want to encourage everyone to keep your microphone muted until you are speaking. It will help with the background noise for all of us. Let me go on down the agenda. Does anyone on the select board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening? Rather than call the roll, I will ask for a report if you have a conflict of interest.
No.
No.
Oh.
I do not. Okay, next up is approval of minutes. We have a batch of minutes to approve, and I'm going to ask for a motion to approve them as it said. We can still discuss them individually. They are for June 1, Water Board, June 15, Water Board, July 6, Select Board, June 15, Select Board, July 6, Water Board. And that's it.
You want them approved all at once, Tim?
Yeah.
I make that motion.
Moved by Art.
Second.
By Tony. Any discussion on the minutes on any of those dates? Additions or corrections?
Tim, I think I missed one of those meetings. I think Water Board.
Okay, let me remind everybody. We have a kind of a tradition of abstaining when you're absent, but it's not a requirement. And it actually shows that you support the rest of the board in approving the minutes. So if you don't mind, I'd like to keep it as approved just for convenience. Okay. Since there's no more discussion, we will ask the question, do we approve the batch of minutes so indicated? Ken Harrington?
Yes.
Art Whitman?
Yes.
Joe Barber?
Yes.
Tony Krulikowski?
Yes.
And Tim Skagans votes yes. So those minutes are approved by a vote of 5-0-0.
Tim, if I could, could you start the recording?
Thank you.
We'll leave that to the cat for this one.
This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry about that. Okay, next up is warrants. Let me bring those up. So the first is check warrant number two. And the total amount is $29,238.72.
Some of.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Second by Art. Major items here, I see several, 700, 1100, 500 for A&amp;K Agro Services. Was that a particular project?
Calling a gravel.
Say again?
Calling a gravel.
Okay. $7,000 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, 3,500 to Bennington County Sheriff, 1,100 to CAT TV, 1,800 to Innovative Surface Solutions. I see a couple of 500 to NIMRIC. Was there something specific there today?
That was for the Assessor, putting up things at the end of the season to get out the grand list. It's his contract.
All right, 7,700 to TAM. And those are the major items. Any other discussion on check warrant number two? So the question is, do we approve check warrant number two? Ken?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
10 votes yes, so check warrant number two. Total amount, $29,238.72 approved, 5-0-0. Okay, next I have payroll warrant number one. Total amount is $23,436.65.
Don't move.
Motion to approve from Tony?
Second.
Second by Art. Any discussion on the payroll warrant? The question is, do we approve payroll warrant number one? Ken?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
10 votes yes, so check warrant number one. Total amount, $23,436.65 is approved, 5-0-0. Are there any announcements? I will remind everyone again that the voting this year has been moved from the firehouse to the new town garage on North Road. This is done for the sake of social distancing, to give us more room to spread out, to protect voters and our poll workers. Along with that, we are encouraging everyone who can and is willing to vote by mail-in ballot. You can request a mail-in ballot by going to the shasberryvt.gov website or go directly to the My Voter page on the Secretary of State's website. Request it there, the request goes to our town clerk, and your ballot will be mailed to you. Primary ballots are out. November general election ballots will be available 45 days before the election. And you can indicate whether or not you want to do that on either or both. And I guess by this time, everyone has probably gotten the state mailed postcard that indicates that you can request your mail-in ballot via that postcard as well. So check your mail. Okay, next up is public comments. I believe that a lot of the people here are here to comment on item number eight on the agenda, which is under the Emergency Management Report, the contemplation of a face mask requirement in Shasbury. If you are commenting on that, I invite you to hold your comments until we discuss that item on the agenda. If you would rather, you can make comments now. Or if anyone else would like to make a public comment on any subject, now's the time.
I will definitely vote.
Tim?
Yeah, Karen Melon.
Quick, quick public comment. It's sort of a question. I'm curious as to what the status is at the transfer station regarding, I thought there was going to be a new building for Shelley, and I'm also wondering about the contract with, I guess it's Casella at this point. Are we going to be getting any information on that?
Yeah, Dave, you want to fill us in? We were headed down the road to building a new shack and got diverted by a few things. Sorry.
We do plan on replacing Shelley's shack. In the original plan, we were going to replace it, but she wanted to keep what she had until we moved it. And then she wanted a new one. We did put it in an air conditioner for her to get it through the summer. We'll craft the new one. But it will be built on and will be combined on that pad that's behind it with a smaller swap shed. It will be there also. As far as the contract with TAM goes, the selling is, contract is up.
I can't hear anything.
Okay, I'll let that noise pass. The contract is up next year with Casella, and we will be continuing to operate.
And when did you say that Shelley would have a new, a new office?
It may be at the end of the summer, early fall at this rate. We just had to be put off for a little bit as we got into the end of last year, the fiscal year. And if everything else going on, it just got backed up a bit. But she'll have it by the end of the, end of the year. Probably by the end of fall, mid-fall. Depends on Eddie's schedule at this point.
Yeah, okay. It's a pretty dinky space that the two of them have to share. So I just remember we talked about it at March meeting, that it was going to happen soon. And it's just, you know, every time I see her there, it's sad.
Yeah, it was intended to be sooner, but we had to put it off for financial reasons. So it was coming up about 10 plus with the swap shed because it was going to be integrated, the two buildings. But it is up, though, out there to be done.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Tim.
Sure. Carl Corman?
Just a clarification, Dave. When did you say the, the contract is up for the dump? When will you be negotiating with Casella?
Casella's contract is up next year. So.
It's 2021 in January or what?
No, it's like in June, I believe.
Thank you.
I don't know the exact date of the company.
Any other public comments? Okay. Next up is the Treasurer's report with Millie Dexter.
Hi, everybody. I think I sent the reports, send them if you got them. The cash flow, we can take a quick look at.
Yep, I'm bringing it up now.
Okay. There's not really all that much to say. I'll get through this fast because I know you've got other fish to fry tonight. Basic thing you see there is we got the first of our quarterly highway state aid down there, that 41,000. And you also see that first draw we did on the line credit in anticipation of tax revenue. That's pretty much all that's going on on the revenue side. And nothing you don't know about already on the expenditure side. It's too early to make any kind of projections to the budget, so we can just breeze through this. On the reserve fund side, you don't even have to bring that up if you don't want to. There's just some final, some water payments are coming in very slowly, but it's a tail end of the billing cycle for that. The other thing I did want to, any questions about, about cash flow at all? Okay, it's pretty, it's pretty early and straightforward. The other thing that I had Dave put on the agenda for tonight is the, I wanted to have one official discussion about the penalty for late filing of homestead. I'm completely agnostic on this, but I know that some towns are revisiting it in light of confusion about what were due dates on taxes this year. And I think some towns are thinking there was so much confusion that they, and I believe the governor gave permission for towns to revisit the possibility of waiving some penalties and interest. So I wanted to raise the issue of waiving the penalty for late filing of homestead. That always gets a few people. I don't know whether it's going to be more this year. We've never waived it during my tenure. I believe that when, when Bill was Treasurer, it went back and forth a couple of times, which also created some confusion. But I wanted to dump that in the lap of the Select Board to decide one way or the other whether we want to have the penalty for late filing this year. I can give you the arguments on both sides if you need to hear them.
As I recall, the main argument for it was that it does put a burden on the Treasurer when that late filing comes in, and you have to do extra work. And so we want to discourage it for that reason. Am I right about that?
That's, yes. It's definitely have to keep checking and keep doing mailings. It's a, it does create a lot of confusion, especially with people with escrow companies because often the escrow company will pay the original amount, and then that creates credits. It is a cascade of a lot of extra work. It's, it's not just the work, though. It's a confusion to a lot of people who don't understand why there's so many iterations of the tax bill. So anything that encourages people to get that homestead in on time, I'm in favor of. But the argument on the other side is that this is a very strange year. And generally, we're supposed to cover this issue at town meeting for the, for the following fiscal year. But we did, I believe, get permission from Mount Hillier to address it now in the middle of, well, not into the new fiscal year.
Well, I believe you've brought this up before, and we never really discussed it, I guess. My thought was that the deadline for filing was extended this year along with the deadline for filing taxes. So it should have been all the easier to get it done. So unless someone changes my mind, I'm not inclined to waive that penalty.
How much money is the, is it a lot better?
It's a, it's a, it's a flat percentage. I think it's 3%, but don't quote me on that. I'd have to look that up.
What I'm wondering is how much?
I'm sorry, what's the question again?
How much is it a year to the overall? How much?
Oh, you mean how much is it to the town?
Yeah. Yeah.
It varies, and it's, it sort of depends on who's, you know, it can be a lot of money if it's, if it's somebody with a very, very expensive house. It'd be not much money for, for a less expensive house. And it always, I think they're probably, I don't know, 15 or 20 people usually forget.
Yeah. Well, what I'm saying is it's not a lot of money to the town for the over, for the late charge.
Oh, no, it's not a lot of, it's not a lot of money to us. It's not like we're squandering anything. It's really more just a punishment to get people's attention is really all it is.
Yeah. Melanie, is there, is there a late charge or a penalty plus interest? Or is it, are there two different things, or is it just one?
Well, when I'm talking specifically about the late filing homestead, it's just a single charge. It's, and it's almost always outweighed by the benefit you get from filing your homestead. I mean, it is always outweighed. So you get, you get penalized a little bit, but then you get whatever you're, you're, you're paying the lower, the homestead rate, and you, and in most cases have an income sensitivity adjustment as well. So the, it's very unusual for the tax bill actually to go up.
I've heard that a lot of people have filed their state taxes, but they went to Mount Hillier and ended up being in a lockbox. Is that, is there any truth to that? That they didn't have the ability to handle them at that time?
I have not heard that. I know that the, the things that I'm getting from Mount Hillier, I'm getting right on the regular schedule. I already have the, the education tax rates. I've already gotten the first, first payment of the pre-bate from the state. So everything that I see has been handled on time.
Okay, thank you.
I think Carl has a question. Is that right?
Carl, say.
I just want to say, I'm one of those people that got dinged a number of years ago for the, for the penalty. Simple reason being that my, I was traveling before I could send in my taxes and had to send them in late. Typically on the state taxes, you can register for, for homestead or not. And as a result of not being able to virtually sign my taxes until April 15th, I was dinged by somewhere around $100. I don't remember if it was 80 or 120. But I do know it kind of bothered me quite a bit, thinking because I had earned and paid my taxes regularly, it was done in every year. And as I recall, when I looked at the law, it was an option for this, for the town by law to assess that penalty. And there was no discussion of it, it was just a penalty. So my point is that one can easily be the victim of this type of penalty without meaning to, to, to be inflicted on. So I, as, as a person who's experienced it and having to every year remember to, to file a homestead application just to make sure that I'm not going to miss my, my tax date is, is, is a bit of a pain. So I'm pointing that out as a citizen who's actually had that experience.
Yeah, I think it's meant to be painful to, for people to do it every year. I'm sorry.
Melanie, this is Tony. What's the drop dead date that we need to do this to?
There's, I, I should have double-checked them. They, you've got another couple of months before they would even be late at this point, I believe. But I think as of October 15th, you cannot file it at all. So that would be considered late. Up until then, there's, there's a window when there is a penalty, and before that, there's no penalty at all. I can, if you want a table, they can bring back the dates at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm thinking, can you let us know then in September? So that we can then react? I'm just thinking that we don't know financially where people are going to be in the next two months.
I don't think we can wait too long because it will be, when I start creating the tax bills, these decisions have to be made.
All right.
Will have to be made.
So what's the drop dead date for you?
Um, I, well, that depends on when I get a grant list. It's my usual chicken and egg problem. I can't create tax bills until I have a grant list, a final grant list from the listers. But I try to send out tax bills in August if I possibly can. I like to give people as much time as possible.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, whatever that date is, then let's rephrase it. I'm just thinking financially, things are, are in flux.
Tony, just a, a, Tony, are you saying that you want to wait and see the state of the local economy better before we make this decision?
Well, I'm just thinking, there's, there's sort of, I'm, I'm watching, you know, money flow one way and the other. And I'm, you know, we could get a bailout, we could not get a bailout. I'm not quite sure where people are. I'm worried that economically, things are going to collapse. So I'm just thinking, let's give ourselves as much time as we can and then make a decision when that time comes.
Art, you had your hand up.
Yeah. Can you file for the exemption and not pay your taxes in full? Is the only way you can get the homestead exemption is by paying your state income tax?
Um, I believe that they are filed together. I'm not a tax expert. I don't, I think you must file it with your income tax. You file the form with your income tax. May, Carl, you can correct me?
I, I know that you can file it up until April 15th, but you can file it online anytime, usually after February of the year.
What, the exemption?
Homestead exemption. Yes. If you go to Vermont Tax, you can file online.
So it's not based on whether or not you can pay your state income taxes, based on whether or not you remember to file?
I can't talk, speak to the question of whether or not you get it if you haven't paid your taxes, but you can certainly file online as early as mid-January or February. Each year, the, the state changes a little bit. There's a, there's a site for homestead filing right on Vermont Tax site.
But I think the vast majority of people will file it with their taxes.
That's how I got dinged because, excuse me, that's how I got dinged because I didn't. I don't do that anymore. I file in February now.
Let me, I'm going to ask if anyone on the Select Board wants to make a motion to waive the late fee for filing homestead exemption.
Make that motion.
And make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second for Tony. Okay, so the question is, do we waive the late fee for filing homestead exemption? Any other comments?
I, I would like to get some more information. If, if, if you are not required to pay your income, state income tax before you can file the exemption, and it's just a matter of filing, I don't think we should do it. I, I think that, I want more information before I go.
Yeah.
Tim?
Karen?
Tim? Just a question to Melanie. Do you insert, doesn't something go into our tax bill, you know, at the end of the summer? Don't we get a notice to remind people to file for the homestead exemption?
Yes.
Is there some sort of an informational flyer that goes in with the tax bill?
No, by the time the tax bills go out, the vast, vast majority of people will already have filed their homestead declaration.
Okay, but even for next year? I mean, are we, is there some way people are being reminded to do this by the town or not? I mean, we're charging a penalty if they don't do it, but are we giving them the information that would help them to know that there's going to be a penalty if they don't file when they file their taxes?
Um, I've never done it, I've never considered it. I, I would consider it. As I say, it would be a problem here, I guess. Most people are in pain for it.
Right, right, yeah.
I'm going to suggest that we move on to other topics. Does someone want to make a motion to postpone the question?
I do.
Art makes a motion to postpone the question. Second by Tony. All in favor of postponing the motion said, no, I will go down the list. Ken?
Yeah.
Art?
Yes.
Joe? Joe, I see a nod of the head saying yes. Tony?
Yeah.
All right, Tim will vote yes, so we will postpone that until we can gather more information. And hopefully.
Okay, I'll put together, I'll put together some bullet points for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Sure. Does anybody have any other questions about Treasury stuff for me before I go?
Thank you, Melanie.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Melanie.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
All right, next up is the Emergency Management Report. Our Emergency Manager was not able to be here due to other commitments. The main thing that he was reporting to us, that you probably all read in the news by now, is it's looking like the COVID cluster in Manchester was not a COVID cluster. That most of the people who tested positive on the antigen test are subsequently testing negative. On the, the other test, I forgot what it's called, that is the, the more accurate test, and also a number of people in the area, over 400, lined up to get a test, worried that an outbreak was about to happen. And I believe all of those have tested negative. I believe out of the original group of 60 approximately, early positive tests, only two so far have tested positive. So it's looking like it was a, a large false positive result in the test and not, and not an actual cluster. Dave, was there anything else that we needed there before we get to the, the question of face masks?
No, that summed it up, and those numbers are fairly accurate to it. There were no positive tests in the testing up in Long Island area. There were 400 tests done, none were positive. There were only two other follow-ups to the Manchester reports were positive. And that, that was test PCR test.
Okay, okay. The, the next item up is. The next item up is face mask requirement. Karen Mellinger approached me. She had heard from other people. I have heard subsequently from other people that they have been concerned about people going into Pollens not wearing face masks. We have the option as a select board to issue an order. This order is an emergency order under the current state of emergency issued by the governor relative to COVID-19. I circulated today a copy of a proposed order. It's about a page long. If you will allow me to, I will paraphrase it. It's citing that it's staying consistent with Governor Scott's executive order relative to the COVID emergency. It states that the Department of Health recommends that all Vermonters wear cloth face coverings outside the home. It cites the governor's executive order from May 15th authorizing legislative bodies, local legislative bodies to pass more strict requirements in their towns. And it cites the Vermont statute allowing towns to do that. And then it goes on to state the requirement to wear a face covering starting tomorrow, July 21st. Any member of the public entering a business located in the town of Shasbury that will be open to the public or a town or building must wear a face covering over the mouth and nose that is consistent with the Vermont Department of Health Guidance on Face Covering. It provides exceptions for face coverings to be worn by, it says should never be worn by children under the age of two, anyone who has trouble breathing, or when anyone unable to remove the mask without assistance. It has a posting requirement saying that all establishments must post a sign at the entrance stating that a face coverings are required by order of the Shasbury Select Board. And it says that the effective period is that it will remain in fact until it is amended, rescinded, or suspended by the select board or the governor's emergency COVID order is rescinded, whichever comes first. And what I would request is that we get a motion in a second and then we can control the discussion.
And Tim, can you take down the cash flow thing so we can get a better screen?
Yes.
There, thank you. Oh, I make the motion?
Moved by Art.
Same move.
Second by Tony. Discussion, let's start with the select board.
I just think it's, we've got to do it. People, people without a mask have the potential to make me sick enough so I could die. I think I have a right to ask them to wear a mask.
Any other comments from the select board?
I believe in wearing masks. I wear them all the time myself and I'm probably more likely to get wiped out by this thing than anybody on the board. But I don't, I think that we go a little far with. You can't, my feeling is you can't let sleep have its sense. And if a business wants to put up a sign, which I've seen a lot of them, we won't let you into place for a lot of them. So, that's the way I think it ought to go. Just don't think it's our place to go quick that far.
Has anyone contacted the people in Pollens about how they're going to enforce this?
I went and saw Bobby Pollen. He is desperate for some guidance as to what, to put on the door. He basically wants to be able to blame somebody for the fact that he can tell people not to come in unless they have a mask.
Good, thank you. That's all we need. Yeah, that's all we need.
He's desperate. He's really frustrated.
Yeah, totally. I totally understand. Good, alright, good to know. Thank you.
My comment is that, is exactly that, is that the main intention of this is to provide some backup to retailers who want to protect themselves and their employees and their customers. My personal feeling is that this is an infringement on liberty in the same way that stopping at a red light is an infringement on liberty. It is common sense to do it and if you don't do it, you can kill people. So, it's one of those situations where liberty runs into the effect of your liberty on other people.
Now, you've got to begin to talk about the common good. It's not about individual liberty. Your individual liberty only kicks in if you are not infringing on anybody else's right. We all have a right to live disease-free. And so, people have an obligation to every single other citizen to make sure that they are safe. And so, it's about the common good. We have to begin to talk about the common good.
Joe, you want to chime in before I open it up to the public?
Yeah, sure. I just think common sense goes a long way, proper mitigation, social distancing. I think masks are required if you're going to be closer than six foot to someone. Also, if you have a cold or, you know, a persistent cough, I would say, yeah, you should probably be wearing one to, you know, protect those around you not to let particulates in the air. It's a lot of overkill. I hope it goes away soon, as we all do. I think social distancing is, I, and I'll say right now, I've been in Pollens without a mask several times, but I also stay six feet away from people. I don't, you know, whip on in the back of somebody. I keep my distance. I think that, you know, that's the whole key is people need to remember, be mindful. And when people come walking up to you and you don't have a mask on, you know, shame on them, they should really be, they'll be staying back away from you. But, yeah, you're right, in a public place, I think, you know, a mask is a good idea. And, you know, I am guilty for going in there without one, but like I said, I do practice social distancing. I do stay six feet away from people or more. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, let's open it up to public comments. I'm gonna, we've got a number of people here. We'll go through it one at a time and I would ask you to keep your statements as brief as possible. And the first person with his hand up was Bill Fisk.
Thanks, Tim, for recognizing me. I certainly agree with the concept that everyone should wear a mask in public places. I think the problem with this ordinance is that you're putting the proprietor of the business in a somewhat difficult position. I mean, they can certainly say to a customer, you don't have a mask, get out of my store. But the reality is there are people who will resist that. And there's no, there's no policing function, and I'm using that in a broad sense, policing function in this regulation and this, this poor ordinance you're talking about. And that concerns me because there are people who are not going to wear masks. They're going to not wear a mask because they're going to flaunt the law. And what we're doing is we're creating another example of a law without teeth that effectively reduces respect for law across the board. That's my two cents.
Let me just interject that the, according to VLCT, the law has a little bit of teeth in that there is a, built into statute and into the governor's executive order on, emergency order on COVID, that violating any emergency order during the emergency can carry up to a $500 fine and up to six months in prison or both. So, there is, there is, the penalty is in there. Of course, the question is enforcement. I bet that you were going to comment on Bill Fisk.
That's my question, Tim. How are you going to enforce that? I mean, police departments across the country are refusing enforced mask rules.
Yeah, our thought here is what we, what Art said earlier, is that the retailers would like this backup. We're offering it as backup. They can say that it's ordered by the select board. We don't want to put police in stores. We don't want anybody to get a $500 fine. We just want people to wear their mask. And this is what this is about.
Bill, it's all we can do. It's all we can do. Let's, you know, if we, if he's allowed to put a sign up that says, "No mask, no service", that's at least a beginning. I mean, I've seen it happen in Price Chopper where all of a sudden, because they said, "No service, no mask", people are wearing masks. The majority of people are wearing masks. That's all we can do. I totally agree with you, but I think the more people that hear it and there are a number of people who will respond to the directive, you know, and let him, let him use us as the boogeyman. That's fine. That's fine.
So, Paulin? Yeah, thanks for recognizing me, Tim. I'd note, first of all, in response to Bill's comment, there are a lot of laws that are passed at virtually every level of government, local, state, federal, that don't have penalties attached to them. But they identify what the public's position is on how to act in public or how to act as a unit. I'd also, therefore, I, and nobody's asking Pollens or the Chocolate Barn or Clearbrook to go out and police it. But to put up the sign should be enough. And if we will, it will result in certain other people in the business that are there wearing them to, dare I say, shame these people that are not complying with the law. And I think that's all we're really looking for. Frankly, we all have seen plenty of signs in businesses, especially in the summer, that say, "No shoes, no shirt, no service". I don't see how this is that much different, but at least as noted by Tony, it shows that the proprietor is not going to be the bad guy. Proprietor can say, "This is the town's effort". And also, as a resident of Shasbury, I'd like to say, there have been a number of times I have been by Pollens and I wanted to go in and get milk, ice cream, and I saw all these people roaming in without masks. I didn't go in. They lost my business.
Yeah.
And therefore, and not only did they lose my money, I have been denied that opportunity to go in and feel safe in my own town in a commercial area. So, I think that's a very, very important factor. This is not only a burden for us, it's a burden for the business. And the people that are coming in wouldn't know otherwise that there is a rule that they have to do it. And they can go on if they don't like the rule, somewhere's down in Manchester and get whatever they want to get when they're going for their activity. So, I think, I think for those various reasons, I as a resident and my wife as a resident don't want to be denied that opportunity and we would like our government to take some action. Thanks.
I saw Karen Mellinger's hand up earlier.
Well, Carl actually said just about everything I was planning to say. I mean, how many times you've gone in and seen signs, "No shirt, no shoes, no service"? And people respect that. So, I hear what Bill is saying in terms of how do you enforce it? But I do, I do think you enforce it by example. And I think it would, again, provide, you know, some real backing for the few businesses. We don't have a lot of businesses in town, but we do have a lot of people that are concerned about this virus. And the common good, as Tony said, is something that ought to be paramount for all of us. And everything else I've been thinking has already been said, so I'll, I'll give my time to someone else. Thank you. Thank you for the board for bringing this up. We really, I really appreciate it.
Arthur Service?
Hi, I'm speaking for Bob and myself. And we agree, I agree with Carl completely and with Karen. It just doesn't make any sense not to give the Pollin people the opportunity to put the mask sign up there. So, they might even increase their constituency. Right now, every time I see, I go by there, I will not go in. I used to patronize them, but there are so many people coming out of there without masks on that I'm very fearful. And I just don't understand that kind of mentality personally. I find it very disrespectful. So, I agree with Carl, I agree with Karen, and I agree with you, Arthur. Thank you for approaching Pollens because he gave you the opportunity to do this. He wants you to do this. He wants us.
He does.
Yes. So, what does that tell you?
Thank you, Barbara. I'm here to, I see a few people who can't wave their hand, who are apparently calling in on the phone or without video, so I'm going to ask first Sally Sugarman if you would like to make a comment? Okay, and I also see Mike Foley. Would you like to make a comment, Mike Foley?
No.
Alright, Craig Weaver, I'm guessing you're here for the bid proposal item later in the agenda, but you're welcome to make a comment.
Hey, Tim, my wife would like to make a comment.
Alright, let me get to, I just saw calling in Andrew Knoffel. Do you want to make a comment?
No, because I just was able to get on now, so I missed everything, so I don't want to interrupt.
Alright, before I go to Cindy, I saw Tom in Charge waving his hand.
Yeah, thanks, Tim, for recognizing me. First of all, I want to thank the select board for bringing this topic up. I think it's extremely important and it's something that needs to be addressed. I agree with all the statements that have been made by various members of the public. I have a few questions, though, regarding the publication. It says posting requirements that each business is to have a posting. Is there any uniform signage that the, either the town is going to provide for the businesses or the states can provide regarding the verbiage of this sign?
Yeah, Dave tracked something down today. We will email it to the businesses and print up copies of our own and make sure that they get through the, to the businesses. So, yes, there will be a standard.
I have a few follow-ups too, Tim, if you just bear with me. Would that verbiage include the fines that you mentioned?
No. That was not our initial plan. We're open to suggestion.
Why not?
Mainly because we don't want people to be fined. We want people to wear the masks, but as I say, we're open to suggestion on that.
Well, let me suggest that that verbiage can be placed on that sign. And the reason is, we've, we, meaning my wife and I at our business, have already encountered a few, let's say adversarial situations with people coming into the shop. We've politely requested them to put face masks on as the sign indicates on the front door prior to entering our business. And they refused to and we asked them to leave. Now, so far, the most we've gotten is, let's say, some, let's say verbal feedback, being polite to the rest of the group as regards to their responses. Sometimes we're finding that people, most people respond to the sign on the door. I think other people need a little bit more encouragement and a reminder that violating such an ordinance will result in the following, the following punishments. The $500 fine, the imprisonment. And quite frankly, I can't see why that wouldn't be a part of that signage. So, that's my, that's my suggestion. I think that's, I think that's a necessary element of that sign. Because what we're going to face is, so far, Vermont has reported zero deaths since May, I believe, was the last statistic I heard. And that's extremely encouraging and all Vermonters should be very proud of that. And I know, I know I am, because that means we're doing something right. And we're a small community, we're a small state, but obviously, we're following CDC guidelines. We're trying to keep each other safe. What's going to happen? What's going to happen is word gets out, where are the safe spots to go so that the family and I can go and visit and maybe relieve ourselves from the stress and tensions that we're facing, oh hypothetically, in Arizona or Texas or Florida? So let's take a little trip up to the state of Vermont. And I think what we're going to find is people are going to have what my wife and I call vacation head. They're interested in one thing only and rightly so. That's to enjoy themselves in the great state of Vermont. And they're not going to pay attention to these signs. Please, I've had people not pay attention to the, to these signs innocently. And when reminded, they will say, they, they will ask for forgiveness, say, I'm so sorry, I missed the sign and go out and get, and go out and get their, their mask and then re-enter the store. But with an increased volume that I'm predicting, and again, I am looking into a crystal ball that's just as good or just as bad as anyone else is out there. But if this holds true, we're going to get an influx of people and I think there needs to be a little bit more sticker reminder than just simply say, please put your mask on. And, 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 and the Select Board, and this is coming from the Select Board. So I'm encouraging that verbiage on that signage. And if there's no objection by the Select Board or from any from the state, I will alter that myself and put that verbiage on personally.
Tom, I think, Tom, I think the reality is you're not going to get, you're not going to get enforcement in a timely manner.
No, no, I agree.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I, you know, I think you got to be careful. You know, and I totally agree with you. There are 11 million people who have access to Vermont now. And I, and you're one of the, you know, you're one of the target businesses in the state. I think all we can do at this point is to have you put a sign out that says, please wear your mask and practice social distancing. We'd like to keep our state as Corona-free as possible, you know, yeah, as, as, as much as possible. Because the reality is, just like the rescue squad, you're not going to get service within 20 minutes.
Tony, I couldn't agree with you more and I apologize to you because I think I possibly did make myself clear. With that verbiage, let's put it, it's, it's, in other words, it's just a tactic to maybe raise awareness to those folks who, who for some reason just aren't getting the, the more gentle and, and touchy feeling. I see a head waving no, Tony.
I, I, you know, I, you know, I totally sympathize with you, you know, and I, you know, I'm sure you've run into idiots, you know, just say, you know, I'm sorry, but it's, you know, it's the, it's the policy within the local government and within the state, so please comply. If they don't comply, I don't know what to tell you.
No, no, I understand.
I could let me get the, the discussion back to the original question and we'll come back to debating the sign if, if the motion passes. Tom, are you, did you have another point or can I go to Cindy?
I apologize, I, I took up too much time, but no, I'm fine, Tim. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right, Cindy.
Hi, thank you, and thank you for having this discussion. I think it's really important. I think the CDC, along with everybody who's commented thus far, you know, indicates that wearing a mask is the most effective way of preventing the spread of COVID. And while we are very lucky in Vermont right now, there's really no way to know whether we will stay that way. And it's really important that we all be responsible. I'm also thinking about kids going back to school in the fall and, you know, a piece of that is really going to be tied to maintaining the low incidence of infection that we have right now. So I'm heartily in favor of an ordinance. Tom's question raises, you know, a variation on the theme of maybe what Bill was talking about. If, if somebody chooses not to wear a mask and is belligerent, you know, are they going to hang around waiting for the police to show up? And so there's just kind of this, how, how enforcement happens with that? It wouldn't be a deterrent for doing it from my point of view. But someone should probably have thought this through so you know what is going to happen should you end up with a worst-case scenario. The only technical question I have is, the way the ordinance is written, there is an implementation starting tomorrow morning. And I guess one of the questions I have is, you're, I'm not sure everyone is going to know you've passed the ordinance and have a sign for their door by tomorrow. Maybe that doesn't matter, but I just raised that as a sort of technical point. Maybe you want to give yourself a day or two to get the information out to everybody. Or maybe that doesn't matter. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
I looked at what other towns had done and they passed it, it was meant to go into effect the day after it was passed in, in the understanding that this was essentially an emergency order. No one's going to get into any trouble if they don't get their sign up on time, so I'm, I'm comfortable with it if the rest of the board is. So any final comments?
Let me just note Sally is on board now. I don't have, in a picture, and I don't know if she was on mute before.
Sally.
I, I was on mute before. I, I was on mute before and I want to say, I came to this meeting because this was on the agenda. I think it's very, very important. I, I am very concerned when I go into a store and people don't have a mask on. I had this nice experience of going to Staples because I had to, and, and I, I was so pleased everybody had a mask on. When I came home, I said this to Bob and he said, but that's, that's, they insist that everybody has a mask on. And I, I just think it's, it's very important in terms of giving us a sense that we feel responsible not only for ourselves, but for the rest of the community. So I, I think this was very important, which is one of the reasons why I came. And I want to say I support it completely.
Okay, last chance for someone, there we are, Kevin.
That's all I have to say. Ohio, I want to say how pleased I am that there are so many voices and faces at this meeting and so many concerned members in the community. And I fully support the mask ordinance for our town. If you look at a map of the U.S., there are so many states that have statewide mask law, mask rules. And then you look up at the northeast corner of the, of the country and New Hampshire and Vermont do not have that. And I, I was surprised that the University of Oak doesn't have such a mask rule. And I think taking care of our own town is critically important. We live less than half a mile from Paulins. We live very close to the public school and we're regular customers of Paulins. We like to, to stay that way. I was very encouraged by what Art Whitman was saying, that Paulins appreciates this idea because it takes the heat off of them and allows them to put the sign up and let people know that's the law. So I think it's really important that it was a community law, hand together, for our own safety. And remember that the school is half a mile from Paulins and is planning to open in just, you know, five, six weeks. And another thing to remember about Paulins specifically is that they pump gas as well and we have people coming all day from all, all kinds of places, put us in their car and then you go in and buy a coffee or a soft drink or a sandwich at the belly counter. So let's try and do the best we can to keep our community safe and also let people coming into the community know that these are the new rules. Again, my thanks for all of your good work.
Okay, who hasn't spoken?
This is Andrew from Clearbrook Farm. May I speak for a quick second on video, start with that?
Yes, Andrew, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just really briefly, just sorry I came in late. I really appreciate this as well. I, I saw the, read the ordinance, it was emailed to me this, this afternoon. And I'm really fully in support of it. We've had a mass sort of requirement for our business and it had a, it's been really successful. And quite frankly, for business, I think it's actually added to our business. It's increased our business because people feel really comfortable there. So people really like to see us being proactive and consistent every time they show up. The last few, couple of months, I make the same protocol every time or, or improve. And I think just being able, I think for other businesses, it's, I'm really glad to hear, I'm sorry I missed that part about Paulins, but when I do go down there, I just get gassed because, you know, I see so many people going in and out of there without a mask, it makes me extremely uncomfortable. So I'm, I'm on full support and I'll get off. Thank you all very much for, for making this up.
And Michael Day.
Very quick, I am very much, Shane and I are very much in support of the ordinance and I have nothing really to add, just know that we are very supportive of this action by the Select Board and thank you from the Select Board.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to move to calling a question unless someone has a comment they really feel needs to be stated here.
Tim, I do. I would like to amend the motion to say that the signage on the door is up, can have the business about the fine and imprisonment at the owner's, at the owner's discretion. In other words, if they don't want that on the sign, that's okay. So we'll basically make up two signs, one with that on there and another one with it on there, okay?
So we have a motion from Art to amend the motion requiring face masks in town to say that the signage will.
Signage on the door.
Signage on the door for the businesses may or may not include information about penalties for failure to comply. Does that capture it?
It does.
Is there a second? I will second the motion for discussion purposes. Art, I would like to keep it simple. I think we ought to pick a sign one way or the other and, and let that be the sign. Are you, are you, what is your thought? Should, are you leaning toward this, the, putting the penalty information on, on there or not?
I, I almost agree with, with Tom. I don't want, I don't want the sign to be too wordy and something that they can't see, but I, well, I think that imprisonment and fine at the bottom of it would catch their attention. But again, if you don't want it on there, just we'll make up another, make up a sign that doesn't have it. I, I like, I think Tom's got a point.
I think Tom has a point. I was going to make the suggestion earlier that we not include the information on this, about the sign here and give Dave tomorrow morning to check and see if other towns that have passed this have included that information and to make sure there's not a, a legal issue with it, that, that we've got the statutes right and that sort of thing.
Yeah, this is, we researched a bit. This is not an ordinance that's been stated several times tonight. This is a emergency order based on the state's orders. I personally have many questions about the fine and imprisonment. We would have to find out who actually is authorizing this, who would possibly be enforcing this. I have not seen this on any other town's emergency orders. They're all emergency orders that can only be generated because it's a state emergency order. I've never seen that, that penalty or the imprisonment clause, so I'll have to find out where that is and that, I think would have to be worded with some backup on a sign. Otherwise, that can put someone in a bigger problem, especially if they find out that there's really no teeth to it, it's just more bluster. And, you know, having been in law enforcement for 25 years, one of the worst things you can do is bluster and have nothing to back it up with because they know. And that puts you in a big bind. So I would gladly have to look into that part tomorrow, but I personally haven't even seen that. So I would have a lot of questions about including that.
Yeah. Can I, can I retract my motion until Dave can look into that? Because that doesn't make sense.
I, I would suggest we just vote down the motion right now and look into it. Well, you and I and Dave can talk tomorrow and if we, we can then talk with the other selectmen and see if we need to call an emergency meeting if there's a debate about the sign. How about that?
Okay, I agree.
Okay, so our recommendation is that we vote down the amendment. So the question is, Ken, did you have a comment?
Yeah, it's, I kind of voted on what Dave said. Put up a sign like that, everybody in the world knows that the captain, captain would force something like that. It just has everybody in jail. They got better things to do. You know, and some people are just boneheaded enough, they, they pull their horns right out, well, I'm not going to wear a mask just because, because I can't. And, you know, I, I will vote for the motion, but I think we're getting a little carried away with the government sometimes. You've got to use Google for camera test on your own.
Okay, the question is, do we amend the motion to include, include a direction that two signs be produced with and without penalty information? And I think the consensus is that we would vote no. Ken?
No.
Art?
No.
Oh.
Tony?
No.
Tim votes no, so the amendment is not agreed to. We are back at the main motion. I would like to call this question. Should the town order the face masks according to the, the order that was circulated earlier today and paraphrased earlier this evening? Ken?
Oh, yes, with reservations.
Art?
Yes.
Joe, you look to be muted.
Oh, I, I said yes.
Okay. Tony?
Yeah.
Tim votes yes, so the motion is agreed to by a vote of 500. And we will let Dave look into the, the sign question and we'll, we'll talk tomorrow. I'm going to be out of pocket noon to the evening, so Art, can you follow up with Dave?
I will, yes.
All right, thank you, everybody, for your comments. Appreciate everyone being here.
No, Tim, clarification. So this order is in effect starting tomorrow.
Correct.
Okay. We do have some signs that I can try and get around. This is basically what they look like. If the people who may want that, copies of these, I don't know how well you can, but I installed that, borrowed that from the city of Berkeley and adjusted it a little bit for us. It just says on the bottom, by order of the Shaftesbury Select Board, July 21st, 2020. And I can send an email that to somebody if they need to get it up tomorrow.
Okay, I would say let's, let's hold off until we, we decide if we want to put the, the punishment information. I think we might confuse things if we start sending out different signs. As I say, we will get, get this out as soon as we can. And no one's going to get into any trouble for not having a, a sign up by noon tomorrow. Okay, moving on, Department of Public Works report. Dave, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, for general information, the ditching work is going to continue on Murphy Road and across the Fella Flats. We're going to install a couple of stone pillows over there through the flats to help the drainage in the spring. As many, anyone who drives it in the spring knows, it gets pretty muddy through there. Mr. Ozley has finished.
Uh, Mr. Ozley is finishing the roadside mowing and that should be done by the end of the week. Uh, they're going to seed mulch the upper section of Murphy Hill and Sally Gavin. Uh, there's going to be some re-surface gravel and underdrain on Colter Road also. That goes along with the new flats. Uh, the following week, they're going to be installing two culverts on Tinkham Road. That is to fix a pounding problem at the four-way intersection of Myers, uh, across from Tinkham. Uh, and grading roads will hopefully continue to be done as needed. So that's, uh, uh, today, I think they were on Horton Hill today doing some grading. So that'll go around as it's needed. Now we'll just keep up, uh, with the roads, which I, I really think are in, uh, very good shape right now. Some of the, some of the best they've been. Uh, we might look at right to the contract. And before we get into awarding of the contract, let's ask this question of paying for the contract. Now, uh, the amount of money we're looking at, the way to fund it would be, we have a class three road fund for fiscal 21, which is a hundred thousand and fiscal 22, which is a hundred thousand. Combined with grant of a hundred and seventy-five thousand and a little money from the culvert reserve fund, we can pay for the entire contract. Uh, the class three road fund is four projects. This one happens to be quite a large project and will take up fiscal 21 and 22. But that still leaves in fiscal 21, $370,000 for construction and maintenance. Uh, and that doesn't include any administrative equipment repair or anything. That's pure construction and maintenance. And in fiscal 22, that amount would be about $380,000. So using the class three exclusively to build this bridge culvert, uh, over the two years, there would still be three quarters of a million dollars for construction projects. A regular roadside maintenance and construction. So things wouldn't come to a halt, but, uh, without using the class three road money, uh, which it is a class three road, we would require, uh, bonding this out, which I don't think we really want to get into, or borrowing $200,000. As you remember, this started out much cheaper five years ago or maybe six years ago now when we got this, uh, first got the engineering going, we were turned down multiple times for the grant. And, uh, in that time, requirements have changed and everything else. So the price is up. But I think the best way of funding it is just use the funds we have on hand that are in savings for projects and, and just move on.
How do we end up with, um, $300,000 for road, uh, projects if we spend the class three road fund for two years on this one thing?
Well, because we're in the construction and maintenance category alone. Let me see here, hold on one second, one. The highway construction and maintenance budget for this year is $314,000 and that does not include class three. You add into that the paving reserve, which is 45,000 and the culvert reserve, which is 10,000, that'll bring up 369,000. You add on a three, four percent increase to fiscal 22 and you're looking at that number being 380,000 for fiscal 22. So, I mean, this is one of the reasons why I wanted to have a big fund out to the side, uh, so that we could take care of things like this. Normally it'd be nice, we could spend that on one big project like we did last year. Uh, that, uh, ran over on, on the hollow because that project was, was very expensive also. But we do have the money. Like I said, this year's budget is 314,000 and that's just in construction and maintenance. And that includes subcontractor signs, freewheelable bridges, paving, operating supplies, gravel, fluoride, salt, sand, level and sealing, and the list goes on quite a ways here. Uh, but that money wouldn't be taken out of this. That money would be intact. So plus you add in the paving reserve and the culvert reserve. So it's the way of financing this without going borrowing money and we put money aside for repairs and this just happens to be a big one.
Yeah, what you're describing is, is general, our general maintenance budget, which, uh, we always need. My worry is that, um, we commit the, uh, the class three for two years to this. And then, you know, we get another, you know, mud season or, uh, we have other, uh, some other, you know, major events that are, we have a requirement somewhere that, you know, requires, you know, uh, another $100,000 drainage project like we just spent up in the hollow, uh, last year. Let me ask this, if, if we get into that bind, can we, can we borrow money for a $100,000 road drainage project as easily as we could borrow money for, say, part of this?
Uh, you, in a bind, if you get into the emergency areas too, should you get into like a huge storm that did lots of damage, not so much here like Irene did to other towns though? You have a lot more availability of money. In fact, if this bridge culvert we're replacing, uh, collapsed, we'd get money immediately to replace it. Right now, we have to, we have to pay for it ourselves. You know, there's no FEMA money. If the projects we've been doing with the class three road fund has gone a long way to the improvements we've seen. But we need that money just for a bigger project this time. We got a bad, I don't know many areas that would get really bad anymore, especially with some of the smaller projects we're doing this year. Uh, and because remember the, the gravel budget, even though we went over it last year, is, is pretty high, close to a hundred thousand. And we went over that because we needed more money to finish the Shasbury Hollow project. So, you know, there are ways to adjust to circumstances, but, uh, and in a bind, you can borrow money to do emergency road repairs because of course that's the most important thing all the time.
Art?
I, I feel really confident that we are gaining on these road projects and that even if we have a really terrible mud season, this crew has learned how to handle it. They go out with a grader every morning. Grading, even though it's frozen and that sort of stuff. I think they've done an excellent job and we've gotten the worst of them. And I don't see, and if we got a, another hurricane, it would, we would have FEMA money or, 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 or emergency money. I don't see anything problems wrong with, with going ahead with what Dave, uh, Dave recommends. I think it's excellent.
I guess my worry is that we, we have a problem, you know, that's just a, a local drainage problem that needs a hundred thousand dollars worth of work. Not a thing that we would have emergency funding for. If we, I guess what I'm thinking is we borrowed part of it, like a hundred thousand. We still had 50K in, uh, in the class three road fund in case we needed to do something that wasn't on the agenda that we hadn't planned for, we would have that money available. Whereas I, I'm a little nervous about launching into two years with, uh, no ability to, to do, um, larger than average drainage projects on the roads.
Yeah, a hundred thousand dollar project would be quite large. I mean, that's talking about, uh, the Shasbury Hollow Hill, which, uh, was the worst that anybody had seen that. And I don't, I don't know if there's that many places where that could come up. Just might, you know, I think we'd be better off planning to spend money we know we have if, if some disaster befalls the road and we need to borrow money, we could borrow it for the emergency. But it'd be better not to plan like that.
Ken?
Uh, I agree with, uh, Art that, uh, over the years, we've been working at all, a lot of them bad places, I don't think care of. And I think it's better to use the money we've got if an emergency comes up, we need more money if you have to.
Art?
I can't see paying interest on money when we don't have to have it. Just, just borrow money, just to have other monies, uh, in reserve doesn't. In, in, interest is money that can't, you can't spend on anything else. So let's not, let's not borrow money and pay interest until we absolutely have to.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm persuaded. Dave, what, uh, what are you suggesting we do tonight?
Okay, well, now we can move on. If, if we agree that that's the pathway to pay for the project, we can vote on awarding of the contract. As requested at the last meeting, uh, Michael's taking this to Chris Penassi, who was the original engineer on the project years ago and has been assisting us with this and with, uh, Josh, what's his last name? It's Har, Harney Seki or something like that, uh, from A and R. They looked over the bids and they've looked over the proposition from, uh, Weaver's. It was a little bitter, you might remember at, uh, 386, 312.50. They, uh, don't see any problem with, with the proposal and the design of the culvert. Uh, it's our recommendation that we award the bid to Weaver Construction for the amount of 386,312.50. With the, uh, console, the agreement clean us that the work, uh, must, must be started by June 2021, the end of 2021 and finish, uh, in, uh, fiscal 22 in July 2021 or with delays a little bit later. Cause we needed to, we needed to breach the fiscal year from 21 to 22 so that we have the money.
I make that motion.
Okay, we had a motion from Art to award the bid for the Shasbury Hollow Culvert to Weaver Construction for the amount of 386,312.50. Is that the right number?
That's correct, yeah.
And I'll need you to help me again with the date requirements that you want.
Uh, so the project, uh, needs to start before June 30th, 2021 and finish, uh, in June, in July or August 2021. It's estimated to be a 30-day project. So if he starts mid-June, it should be done by mid-July.
Ken, so start? Start before June 30th, 21 and end by July? End, I'm sorry?
Hey, to end, uh, July or August of 21. Just so we have some leeway. I don't want to make it, it has to be done by July 15th or something. It's just important that the job starts and once this whole year ends, the next one.
Okay, how about ends by, uh, August 31st, 2021? Okay. So that is the motion. It was moved by, Art, was it? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ken. Discussion.
Yeah, uh, Ken, I just want to check with Mr. Weaver. Uh, is he aware that this won't start until next year? And is he comfortable with this price based on, there may be some increases?
Uh, he does know that we're talking about next year and he scheduled in this year anyway, even if it was awarded so. Part of the original bid package too, uh, expressed the idea that we needed this to start next year, not this year.
Okay, as long as, just long as you have some understanding.
Yep, I agree, yep.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, the question is, do we award the, uh, the, the bid for the Shasbury Hollow Culvert project to Weaver Construction for the amount stated and the, uh, start and end, end times that were stated? Ken?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Tim votes yes. So the motion is agreed to by a vote of five zero zero.
Uh, the next thing coming up that we're going to start looking at, Michael and I talked about it a couple of times and we keep starting and stopping. Uh, as many of you know, there's a very narrow section on Cold Spring Road along the bend there. It's basically one lane in each direction. Or concave directions with the distance. Uh, we want to start looking into that to expand the road. Uh, as you're aware, we signed, uh, a grant with the state that our roads from up to Vermont State Road standards and that section of road is too narrow and doesn't quite work directly. So we're going to look into that and start the discussion and look into plans to widen that road. Remove some of the dead trees and make it, uh, so that when people come around the bend, they're not head on to each other. It is, uh, it's just plain too narrow. It's, it's nowhere near the width it's supposed to be. So we expect to have some debate over our idea to, uh, to do that. So we're kind of, uh, providing a warning to the board. Uh, but the road, the road is too narrow and doesn't meet the state standards that we've set that we are living up to. Uh, we've talked about this, Mike and I talked about this for the last year and we've looked at it. There's some expense to it. So we're going to work up a, a plan and approach the homeowners, but it's all town right of way we're talking about.
It's been like that for years.
Yeah, yeah. And all I hear is people, whoop, I almost, you know, guy come around the bend on me, all right? And, you know, I'm going to run out of time on that one eventually. So I think we need to get it going.
Okay, without objection, uh, Dave and Mike can, uh, pursue developing a plan for that, uh, that part of Cold Spring Road.
Okay, we'll take that up. Uh, we are also going to move to, uh, if you remember, we were going to auction off uh, equipment here and filing cabinets. We, we can't do that obviously. There's an online auction group that we are going to use. Uh, we will put it, follow their lead, the advertisements out. People can bid on the items online. Uh, it's very successful. Uh, Norm uses it a lot and North Bennington and I know other people use it. Uh, it's not a tremendous amount, but we would expect to clear 15, 20,000 dollars on the auction. So we're going to get that going as, as soon as we can. Uh, the things that we're going to sew off are the Caterpillar track loader, the, uh, old Ford 550, uh, 1995 International, uh, John Geter 4100. Uh, the old pickup truck in the weeds over here outside my window. And a heavy-duty utility body we took off when we bought the fluoride truck. So that, uh, and then we have about 15 file cabinets and old safe and a few other things to auction off. So like I said, it, it's, uh, the only way really to do it now is to do it through one of these online vendors. So with the board's permission, we will contract with one of the companies to get that going.
Uh, Dave?
Yep.
The mower go with the tractor?
Yeah.
You said the 4100 John Deere?
Yeah, the 4100. No, that's, uh, that's the one that has the snow blower and the sweeper. That's a, it's a 2002 John Deere.
Okay, so, so what about her, the John Deere tractor with a, with a mower? What was the longer?
No, we're going to keep that.
Okay, yep, wanted to make sure.
Mike is mine, but, uh, you know, right now we can use it this year. It still runs. Yeah, I wouldn't want to use it full-time. It still moves right.
Okay, without objection, uh, Dave can proceed with, uh, plans to, uh, line up an auction.
Yes.
Yep.
We'll do that. Uh, the next item I had was, uh, the demolition of the old garage building. Uh, I was going to put together a bid for that because I kind of slipped my mind that first half of the contract, we have the building's check for asbestos. So we can't go out the bid unless we know if there's some complication with that. So, um, the state has a list of approved asbestos testing companies. Uh, almost everyone in this area and we've used them repeatedly for different buildings is Catamount out of Wellington. And, um, it'll be well under $2,000, probably under a thousand dollars for them to check the building, but it's the first step to remove it. Cause before we contract it or even before I can develop an RFP, uh, I have to know whether or not asbestos removal would be included in that. And so with the contractor, that doesn't work. Uh, we would have to have that all removed first. So I'm going to go ahead and hire Catamount to, uh, inspect the building.
Okay, again, without objection, Dave is instructed to proceed with getting an asbestos check on the old garage.
Yep.
Well, that's it for the DPW.
I have one, I have one thing. Just to, uh, let you know that the, uh, the North Shaft Lions is going to work at the Howard Park. Uh, it'll probably be under a thousand dollars. I don't know, Dave, are you going to pay for individual invoices or, or lump sum or how are you going to handle that?
We can do it either way. Uh, we can do it as, remember when we made the donation to Perrin Lake? Uh, when they were building the, uh, clubhouse as a boathouse, whatever they called it? Or we can just pay the invoices as they come in. It depends on if, um, I don't know if it's, would be better for us to make some payment upfront. It depends on if, um, I don't know if it's, would be better for us to make some payment upfront. I don't know how much cash the Lions want to put out of pocket for this stuff. Or if they provide a list, we can buy it directly.
You're talking about materials that they need to, uh, proceed with the volunteer labor at Howard Park in repairing the, the pavilion?
Yes, I, uh, I think they've got enough money to buy materials. In fact, I think the benches are all built and I think they're ready, ready to go after the stain. So I, I'll make sure they have enough money to foot the bill if you want to pay the invoices once we bring them to you.
Yeah, that's fine, if you just bring the invoices, we'll get them out as quick as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, whatever is most convenient for, uh, for North Shaft, that's what we want.
Okay.
Now, the next item is with the fire department. Uh, we have an offer from the Iberia Rural Fire Protection District in Iberia, Missouri, uh, to purchase the two thousand and six coin international pumper truck. Uh, the offer is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We were asking a hundred and fifteen thousand. It is conditioned on a successful pump test that was done last week. So they are sending us five thousand dollar deposit checks to the truck. And I need the board just to give a verbal approval of selling the truck to them. I do not have a contract yet from them. And it goes through, it actually goes through the vendor Joe uses to sell trucks online. So we don't have a contract to sign yet, but they are sending five thousand dollars with paid money if the board approves the sale for a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
You need a motion, Tim?
Yes.
So move.
Art, you need a motion that we sell the, uh, fire truck to the, uh, people in Iberia, Missouri for a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ken. Discussion. The question is, do we sell the fire truck to Iberia, Missouri for a hundred and ten thousand dollars? Ken?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Tim votes yes, so that motion is agreed to by a vote of five zero zero. That's the, uh, that's the hundred thousand dollars that, uh, I was wanting to borrow for the Shasbury Culvert project anyway, right? So we're home free.
That's right. There's multiple depositories for that hundred and ten thousand.
Everybody's got their handout.
That's right. But between the sell of that and the sale of these scrap, it's a hundred and forty, fifty thousand dollars we could be taking in in sales this year. So that's it. And that's all I have for that too, or anything this evening.
Okay, does anyone else have any other business? Dave, do we need to do anything? Excuse me. Do we need to do anything relative to the cemetery mowing contract? It sounds like it's already all been agreed to with, uh, our new requirement that, uh, Jake carry insurance. I, I think he's got his insurance and he's working. Do we need to formally vote to change that contract?
Uh, I, I, it couldn't hurt to just make a motion and, and say that we amended the cemetery mowing contract to require the, uh, uh, workmen's compensation insurance, uh, as it's required by the town's insurer. And that, uh, that is now part of the ongoing contract. It's not a new contract, it's just an amendment to the old one.
How, how much did they increase the contract by?
About eleven hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
I, I make that motion.
I have a motion to amend the contract with cemetery, uh, with, uh, Sycamore Landscaping, uh, requiring, uh, workmen's compensation insurance and increasing the value of the contract by approximately, uh, eleven hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Can we have some discussion?
Approximately twelve hundred dollars. I don't want to, uh, I think I remember a slightly different number, so. Second by Tony. Discussion on that one?
Yeah, does, do, do we need to make it for two years since he has a two-year contract?
No, it, it would just be amending the current contract to, uh.
For, for one year, is that right?
Well, it would amend it to the end of the contract.
Which is when?
Uh, two years.
So that would be twelve hundred dollars each year?
Correct, yes.
So we need to change that?
Well, it's not going to be twelve hundred, it's just, it might be better to amend, to amend the motion to that he must carry, uh, the, uh, workmen's compensation insurance and, uh, the value of the contract will be adjusted by that new cost. This is something putting on him out of, out of the blue because our insurance carrier told us.
Oh, yeah, I, I understand. Yeah, that's probably the best way to do it so that, so that then, then when, when we do a new contract in the future beyond this one, he can include it and we won't have to go through this foolishness all the time, right?
Yep.
So I, so I like your wording that just says we, we will be responsible with paying the increase because of, of the, uh, because of the requirement, okay?
Dave, is it the case that what we, uh, the motion on the table would require another motion next year when, uh, his insurance comes due again?
Yeah, if we do it that way, we'd have to make the motion every year to the end of the contract. And it's only one other time, but still, we can't do a dollar figure because we don't know whatever it will be.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so we have a motion from Art to amend the, the, the motion to read uh, that the contract with Sycamore Landscape, with Sycamore Landscape, will require, uh, that, uh, Sycamore Landscape carry workmen's compensation insurance and that the contract will be adjusted by the amount, by the cost of that insurance. Is that it?
The taxpayers are going to pay his insurance, his workmen's comp insurance?
No.
Yeah. We have an existing contract with Sycamore Landscaping. We are asking them to change the term to that contract to require him to, uh, carry insurance that he was not asked to carry before because our insurer is requiring it. So we are changing the term to the contract. And in renegotiating that, we are increasing the amount of the contract.
We're going to offset the costs.
So you're so.
If we'd done this.
Well, we broke the contract.
Okay.
Correct. But we didn't break it, we, we.
I was going to say, have we break?
Asked that it be renegotiated.
Have you changed that?
Well, it's a state law that requires him to carry the insurance, right? Or your insurance company? Our insurance company requires him to have workman's comp insurance.
Our insurance company has strongly recommended that we do that. It's not a law and it's not a requirement. Okay, so the amendment is, uh, to change the contract to read that the contract with Sycamore Landscaping will require workmen's compensation insurance and that the contract will be adjusted by the amount of that, in, by the cost of that insurance. Ken?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Joe?
Do you know the cost of the insurance? Was it twelve hundred you said?
It's twelve hundred, but we're, are amending the motion so that we cover the, the, the remaining two-year period of the contract.
Okay, yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Tim votes yes, so the motion is amended. We are asking the same question again on the original motion. Uh, Ken?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Tim votes yes, so the motion is agreed to by a vote of five zero zero. So that is taken care of.
Joe, just for simplicity, the BLCT told me in PAX, our insurer, that if we didn't have these current contracts adjusted, that our insurance rate would probably go up by multiples of what it would cost us to have the contractors get it. They were talking close to ten thousand dollars in annual fees if we hired people who didn't have this. So.
It's pretty rough, yeah.
Yeah, but that's what it is.
It's another game in town. Well, no, they're not the only game.
Okay, other business? All right, action items. Let me go over here and read my list here. Uh, from last time, uh, David was going to check on a stop sign on Tinkham Hill. David, what did you find out?
Well, that was put up with the best intentions, but it's not part of any ordinance that we have for stop sign there. Uh, the thinking was because they're having trouble getting signs because somebody had getting stolen, uh, they're waiting for a yield sign to be put in because it's supposed to be a yield at Leclerc, but somebody stole. Uh, just to Michael that, you know, and I understand the issue coming up Tinkham. But I said, start with this slow sign, dangerous intersection that gets people's attention to slow them down, but he just can't put up a stop sign where there's no ordinance for the stop sign. Uh, so the, the yield will go back up on, on Leclerc. And we, we will put some warning signs as you approach the intersection from Tinkham. Because it is weird with a stop, a yield. You're coming up Murphy Hill, people go straight while you're making a left off Tinkham. So it's kind of, uh, it's one of those when we start addressing, uh, our very old traffic ordinances that maybe we need to look at. Uh, I don't want to bring it up tonight, but I'm looking into, uh, what the cost would be to hire a traffic engineer to really reevaluate our entire traffic. Uh, of course, it's supposed to deter quite a lot and quite old. I know we're going to get some potential to change speed limits. Uh, Rodden Gun Club Road, most people thought they lived on a twenty-five, but it's a thirty-five. Uh, there's just a lot of things out there that, that need to be looked into. And from a traffic engineering standpoint, what's the best thing we should have? The best thing for that intersection like at Tinkham and Murphy. You know, it should be designed better.
You know, it's funny you say that, Dave. Thirty-five miles an hour on the Rodden Gun Club Road? I, I was down there last week and I didn't, I mean, I felt more comfortable at twenty-five than I did at thirty-five.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, um, a lot of this stuff is done blanket and, and these ordinances go back to nineties, the seventies. And it's really is time to pull them all apart and see if we're doing things correctly.
Yes. Old times have changed, you know, demands have changed.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Can't leave it forever.
That's right.
Okay, continuing with action items from last time, uh, there was a Grand Joe Hollow, Grand Joe Hollow street sign that looked like it was in the wrong place.
Yeah, that might quite possibly be true, so okay, then, uh.
It is true according to Garm.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll work on that. Um, Mike Canady and Chris Finessi were asked to review the, uh, the bid for the Shasbury Hollow Culvert, which, as we indicated earlier, they did. Uh, Art Williams is going to, uh, talk with, uh, the PC about the roadside commercial. Art, I understand you had a nice little front porch, uh, conversation with Chris Williams about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm embarrassed to say, I looked at the, uh, at the timing and it said seven thirty and that was when the meeting ended, that's when I logged on and obviously there wasn't anybody there. But Chris was nice enough to ask me to come up and talk to him about what he, what the select board really wanted. And once he found out that we were really only looking for the western side of the road from, uh, Fritz Ludwig Sample Stand up through to just beyond the Chocolate Barn, which is, uh, what's the name of that road, Burt Hill Road?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, only on the west side. And on the east side, around the barn where Bucks Farm has her week, her weekly, uh, tag sale and include Clearbrook, uh, they, he thought that was, what was proposed at the meeting and voted down was both sides of the road. And, uh, he seems to think that once it's explained to him that really that's where the business is on the west side of the road. We don't want to lose the motels if they sell and aren't, uh, aren't turned into a motel within one year. If reversed back to, uh, thing. There's quite a few little businesses, there's people that are loggers, uh, are storing their, their, their equipment and all that sort of, once I pointed all this out, uh, he felt a lot better about going back and I promised I would come in at six o'clock on the next meeting and explain this to the whole board again, okay? So I think it's going to go through.
And, uh, we asked Dave to ask Bennington why they had disapproved the, um, the coin drop proposal from, um, the charity who, that I've forgotten. Dave, what, what did you find out?
The police department just doesn't approve them, uh, they, they can do that there. Uh, but on a bigger scale, uh, I've got all the requirements from the state of Vermont for holding a coin drop and send it to the group. And they decided they don't want to, uh, be part of it. It's, uh, because they have to make up, I believe it was total of eight signs that have to meet the ME to, MU, MU TCD standards. Uh, calculating, they would need to buy about thirty-eight cones for traffic control, which I think is more than what the town owns. It's not, it's not a simple thing. Uh, and there's age restrictions and everything else. And then, you know, I also pointed out that if they were thinking about it now, they would have to follow all ACCD and Vermont Department of Health guidelines, uh, which I don't even know how you collect money out the car window following those guidelines. So they just decided they would put it on the shelf for now.
Good, good.
Okay, uh, tonight, uh, looking at action items that I caught, um, Melanie said she would, uh, go off and come back with a list of pros and cons relative to, um, waiving the penalty for failure to file the home debt extension on time. Uh, Dave is going to, uh, look at what other towns are doing relative to the mask ordinance signs and see if there are, uh, any reasons not to put the, uh, the penalty information on there.
And I'll, I'll, I'll work with Dave on that in the morning.
You bet.
Okay, yes, right. And then others are, uh, uh, Dave and Mike's going to work. We gave them permission to work on the Cold Spring Road plan. Uh, Dave had permission to proceed with the auction. And, uh, we gave Dave permission to, uh, for somebody to look at the asbestos in the old garage. Was there anything else that we promised to do? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Second.
Moved by Art, second by Tony. Without objection, we are adjourned.
Good night.